Good afternoon and welcome to the June 17th meeting of the Salina City Commission. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Seaton.
Here.
Commissioner Devine.
Here.
Commissioner Heath.
Here.
Commissioner Jilka.
Here.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the citizen forum. This is an opportunity for individuals to address us about an item that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would care to address the commission at this time? We'll then move to awards and proclamations. None have been scheduled. Also, public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, none have been scheduled. We'll move to item six, the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 10, 2002.
Motion, please.
Mayor Seaton and I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as submitted. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Five zero, we move to item seven, development business.
Item 7.1, appeal of the downtown design review board's denial of certificate of compatibility for the demolition of former hospice building located at 333 South Santa Fe.
I will excuse myself from this portion of the hearing and ask Vice Mayor Jilka to chair the meeting.
Okay, we'll open with a staff report from Mr. Andrew.
Vice Mayor Jilka and Commissioners, this is a fairly rare case, which is why I'll provide you with a little bit of background. And Vicki has some photographs of the subject property for you to pass around and look at. But by way of background, when the Business Improvement District was created in 1986 for the downtown area, there was also created a downtown design review board. And the purposes of that board are set out for you on page one of your report. Primarily what that board deals with is reviewing applications for exterior alterations or building demolitions or signs in the downtown area, or at least the area that is within the Business Improvement District. The general process, the way that works is that generally there is either a building permit application, a demolition permit request, or a sign permit that is filed with the Building Services Department. And if it lies within the Business Improvement District, that is referred over to the Design Review Board for review. Starting in the fall of 2001, the city planning department more or less took over administrative duties related to the Design Review Board. In other words, we receive the applications, we send out the notices, we schedule the hearings, take minutes of the meetings. Prior to that, that was done by the BID office staff. What we have here is a request that came in toward the end of March for a demolition of the former hospice building. It was also previously used by Security Savings Bank as a banking facility. The purpose of the demolition was to take that office building, to tear it down, to infill the basement area, and to develop additional surface parking similar to what you see around that site. As reviewed by the planning staff, it appeared that 22 additional parking spaces would become available under that plan. As you can see from the photographs, the building was constructed in 1957. It's a one-story building. It still, to a degree, looks like a banking facility. There haven't been a lot of changes to the outside. It still has the drive-through banking lanes, a canopy, still has vaults inside the building. In 1983, Security Savings constructed a new facility adjacent to the north. It was in 1993 that the hospice moved their offices into this facility. They have recently relocated over to temporary space in the Penn campus. This was set for a hearing on April 11th, 2002 with the Downtown Design Review Board. There was a presentation of a staff report. There were comments from the applicant, the health center, and there was discussion by the board. There was a motion made to approve the certificate of compatibility to allow the demolition. That vote failed by a one to three vote. The effect of that was a failure to approve a certificate of compatibility, and without that, a demolition permit cannot be issued for the project. There was an appeal of that that was requested by the Regional Health Center, but they also asked that that appeal be put off until the Salina Heritage Commission had completed its review. Its review was different in that they weren't focusing on the building or the significance of the building per se, but rather because it's in proximity to the Masonic Temple, what effect removal of that building would have on the Masonic Temple itself. They conducted their review on May 15th and found that it would not have a negative impact on the Masonic Temple. Their findings are set out for you in the report. What we've attempted to do is summarize for you the changes that have occurred in the surrounding areas, such as removal of the chapel funeral home, construction of parking, a new surgical outpatient center across the street to the south. Those are all changes that have occurred on this property in the last five years. As you can see from the plan, what they would do is remove the hospice building, construct parking. They would eliminate two curb cuts that exist on Santa Fe today, curb those over. Access to the lot would be from South Street as it is for the remainder of the lot. When we analyzed this and tried to determine the reasoning, there was some talk or our citation of the report that Puma did for the downtown area, and particularly with emphasis on this block providing a link between the health center and the downtown core. And I was just going to speak to that briefly from a planner's perspective. What we interpreted Puma to be saying is that the block between South Street and Mulberry is not very pedestrian friendly. And by that, they're referring to the driveway curb cuts for a Sonic and Taco John's and a drive-up banking facility. If you compare that to the rest of the downtown area where there are no curb cuts on Santa Fe, you don't have to watch for traffic entering and turning. Their point being is that the, that block as it stands today is not, not very friendly for pedestrians to go from South Street up to the downtown core. Not sure that it related specifically to the buildings or streetscape, but it pointed out mostly that you have really vehicle-oriented development in that block and that in the future, any future redevelopment should be, place more of an emphasis on making that particular block more friendly for pedestrians using the sidewalks. That being the case, we analyzed the building from a historical and architectural standpoint. We couldn't, from staff's perspective, say that there's anything particularly distinctive architecturally or historically about this building. So what you have before you is an option of three, three choices. One is to overrule the Design Review Board and grant the certificate as applied for. You could affirm their denial of that certificate for the demolition, or you could refer the matter back to the board for further consideration. Probably be helpful if there was some specific instruction with that. Any of those options that you would choose would require a majority vote of commission, meaning three affirmative votes for any motion. I'd be happy to address any questions that you have about information in your packet or the photographs. We have talked about a hospital zoning district. Would this be part of that, or is it? I would think at least up to the south edge of Security Savings existing facility, including this parking lot area over to Fifth Street and probably this hospice building site, if we were to get to a point where we were mapping that district, that this would be part of it. Do they have any further uses of this lot that we know of at this time besides making it into a parking lot? I don't think so. Part of it has to do with, with a couple items. One, it is designed as a banking facility. It has vaults, drive-up windows, so it's not really all that conducive to making use of it for other purposes. There was some discussion about relocation, but again, the, the vaults and the type of construction make, make that difficult in terms of relocating the building to another site, but...
No, I guess what I meant is, is, is their long-term use of this going to be a parking lot?
I think you'd have to refer that to Mr. Henningcamp.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, I, I've asked Jason to comment a little bit as the staff person assigned to the consulting firm and involvement in several discussions regarding these types of properties in downtown area to give you a little. I think there needs to be some clarification regarding their comments and their reports, and he has spoken to them, so I'd like him to go ahead and do that now.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you. In, when I first read the decision of the Design Review Board, obviously with my role in the Puma report, I was somewhat intrigued. It was, it was somewhat quoted in that report, or in the final analysis of the DRB. I contacted Brad Siegel because it was my interpretation that the, the application of the report was not as I would interpret it to be, so I felt it would be good to have some clarification on that. So I contacted Brad Siegel, the owner and the person who firsthand put together the report for the city on the downtown, to see if my interpretation was consistent with his or not. Felt it was very important. What he told me was that, as I thought, was that the, obviously the plan, the emphasis of the plan is, is an economic plan. That does entail, one aspect is land use, but the emphasis is economic base, and the plan emphasizes strongly the prosperity of the hospital as a southern anchor to the downtown from an economic perspective as it relates to people brought into the city and so forth. What, what the, the discussion of this particular lot was, I believe at that time, as an interim parking measure. Again, Mr. Henningcamp may want to refer to that here in a little bit, but with that in mind, I think that Brad's interpretation in his report was that anything that can bring the hospital closer together with the downtown is a benefit, because you bring those parties that go to the hospital closer to the downtown, and it strong, more strongly encourages the economic impact to the downtown. Obviously, the pedestrian access is part of that, but as, as we relate to the question of the, a missing tooth, I think the application of that is much stronger in the, in what I would call the core downtown where the architecture is of the same basic generation. And you see it in many downtowns where there's a fire in those types of buildings, and there's a true tooth missing in the core downtown. In this particular case, where this facility sits or setbacks, it's, it's not the same as the, the generation of the core downtown. So as far as a specific structure, there was not any emphasis placed directly on that structure in his report as there was for maybe a Masonic Lodge, which in itself is a different type of, of a structure. So his emphasis was not so much on the, necessarily the pedestrian aspect of this particular lot as it was on the application of the ability to empower the hospital to thrive economically, bring it closer together to the downtown, which in his, his opinion, this would fit into the plan from the perspective of strengthening the hospital and their future growth plans in, in doing that. So he wasn't concerned about the development of this lot as related to his plan. I would like to say as well, when we talk about the plan, it is economic, economically based. It certainly isn't a specific land use base such as a comprehensive plan, so even notwithstanding his, his interpretation, his intent and so forth, it's, it's a little bit difficult to compare that against a comprehensive plan and some other planning tools that you have in place that are more specific as land use is concerned, because his was more of an economic-based plan rather than a land use type plan. So anyway, I, hopefully that's helpful for you on interpreting from the Puma perspective this property and that area and how that impacts the future of downtown.
Additional questions of staff? Mr. Gage, one other question. I never did totally understand what the Puma folks meant when they talked about using that block to, to better connect the hospital with downtown. I mean, obviously on their side of the street, they weren't recommending that you tear the Masonic Temple down, but that... Can you shed any insight on that?
I can try. Again, I think the emphasis of that is, and it related to a hospital zone that Mr. Andrews had referred to, is to if in the future plans of the hospital, if they could develop northward, it would bring them closer to the downtown and in essence, connect them more with the downtown and connect the activity between their facility and the downtown. Potentially, you know, what, I think part of the discussion on the Masonic Lodge was, or Masonic Temple was, what is the future of that five, 10, 20 years from now? Could that ever be incorporated? Also, in the same way, what is the use of properties? In this case, it would be to the east of that, and how could that be incorporated as well? So I think they just envisioned that as somehow, if the development would make sense for the, for the hospital to bring folks closer to the downtown, that that would be beneficial for the hospital and in, in return for the downtown. So I hope that helps answer that a little bit.
Okay.
I do have one question of staff. Mr. Andrew, I was a little concerned. The Design Review Board based their decision on the distinguishing original qualities or character of a building or site and its environment are not to be destroyed. Removal or alteration of any historic material or distinctive architectural features should be avoided where possible. Is that correct?
That language comes out of the actual ordinance. That is one of the criteria or factors there to consider when they review a demolition permit. So that, that is based on what's in the ordinance, what they would, would rest their vote on.
Okay, so they feel that the present hospice building has some historic or significant architectural or distinctive features that...
That's what you have to read into that, yes.
Okay. And yet, the Heritage Commission, I realize, only referred to the environs of the Masonic Temple, but in their statements, it, it appeared that they did not feel that the hospice building has character-defining features or...
Right, they...
Distinctive architectural features.
They relied more on staff's review and analysis that due to the age and the architecture, that there was not anything you could point to about that building that was either of an age historically or architecturally significant that you could, you could point to in terms of a reason for conserving it.
Thank you.
With no further questions of staff, would the applicant like to comment?
I'm Jack Henningcamp. I'm representing Salina Regional Health Center. I'd like to disclose that I am a member of the Design Review Board here in Salina. I was at that meeting, one of the presenters in fact. I might ask for clarification on the vote. I think it's of perhaps minor import, but I believe the vote was two to one in favor of retaining the facility. There were six members, two which presented, one which did not vote, one which voted for the demolition, and two that, two that did not. I appreciate this opportunity to appeal the determination of the Salina Downtown Design Review Board regarding removal of the building at 333 South Santa Fe, and would request that you grant that appeal to overturn the ruling of the Design Review Board. The recent Salina Historic Commission found that the building did not fit the qualifications for historic preservation and removal, did not have an adverse impact on the environs of the Masonic Center, which is a listed property, and further expansion of an existing parking lot, which accounts for 75% of the space in that particular area, would not adversely impact the environs. The building does not have a functional value for Salina Regional Health Center, and we are the owner of that facility. Others had previously examined the facility and it was not functional for them, including hospice, which had outgrown the facility, and acknowledged by their executive director of hospice that it was very difficult to maintain, very expensive to maintain from utility perspective as well. Under the authorization and findings in the Salina codes as relates to the Design Review Board, the first item states, "The general design, material, color of the proposed construction or change presents an aesthetically pleasing overall image." We believe that we are doing that with the development that we're proposing and increasing the parking area there, the ground-based parking with that. We will be matching the previously approved and deemed to be appropriate and aesthetically pleasing parking that already exists in place. I'd like us to examine the history of expansion. One of the things that occurs for Salina Regional Health Center is things seem to move slow, but in many ways, they move rather quickly, and being prepared to take opportunity of, of change is very important for us. The process for acquiring property, preparing the property through the various review, reviews that need to take place, does take some time and preparation. I, I would like to point out that many of you probably remember when Weeks was over on Santa Fe Street. That area was removed, Weeks was removed, and the area prepared as parking. And at that location now, we now have what we call the Santa Fe Medical Plaza, which is a 48,000 square foot multi-story office building which serves physicians and many, many patients from Salina and the surrounding region. The location directly across from what was the former main entrance to Asbury Hospital was a parking lot, and that area, and that was in preparation for future growth and to serve the needs for parking, is now the Salina Surgical Hospital. Both of those facilities, we believe, are very well-designed. They meet the needs of Salina and Salina Regional Health Center, and each of them was put up as a result of having the space and having the space prepared to do the further development. I'd like to point out that the former Sears Center, which was, had become a little more than a derelict strip mall, was also acquired and the location and the demolition took place and used as a parking area pending further development of that space, which became the Salina Medical Arts Building. So in each case, I think we have been good stewards of the property. We have tried to do these things in advanced planning for what we would, what we could not foresee at the time, be, be prepared to react and respond very quickly and responsibly as that developed. One thing I might note from the Puma report, which has been commented here, is, is it did, my, my reading of this is this is directly from the report, the City of Salina Market Based Downtown Plan. It does say, say, and I'm quoting from page 12, "City policies and development incentives should be created to direct future hospital campus expansion north along the 300 block of South Santa Fe Avenue. Retention, forced retention of a facility that does not add value to Salina Regional Health Center development or operations does not promote the objectives of planned campus development." We do use certain properties and alternative functions, and when those are possible for us, we do that gladly and readily. The Morrison House was a former residential property which was converted to meet hospital needs for patients that are outside the community that need to, to stay. We use a property at, I believe it's 401 South Eighth Street as residential living quarters for a variety of, of nursing staff that live outside the community that come and work and shop in, in Salina, but need a place to stay while they work at the hospital. We use a property at 211 South Street for a similar function. So we try to do that where we can, and we've determined through, we believe, a thorough review that this property does not or cannot fulfill those needs, and, and our stronger need is further development of some ground-based parking in that area. I'd be glad to respond to specific questions. No doubt you'll have some other community input on this issue. Would like to reserve the opportunity to respond again as appropriate.
Could you run that by again about the discrepancy in the vote? It says three to one in our notes, and you're saying it was actually two to one?
Well, we had six personnel there, and I didn't pick that up until Dean had, had read that. Just as a brief summary, I believe it was represented by Bob Hayman, Al Mattson, myself, Jack Henningcamp, Warren Ettinger, Hank Corcoran, and Jim...
Matley.
Yeah, Matley. That were there. Jim and Al voted to retain the hospice property. Bob voted to, to allow removal. Hank did not vote as chairperson, nor did Warren and I as, as presenters.
Mr. Henningcamp, just as you have used properties in, in intermediate uses as parking lots, is that the intention for this hospice property eventually? Do you have plans to...
It's difficult to predict the future, but I appreciate the question, Ms. Devine. The, I don't know that we plan to put a Salina Surgical Hospital where it ended up, or a... Now, the Medical Arts Building was unquestioned the location. I think Asbury probably did, prior to consolidation, did intend a future growth development for the Weeks property. That would be a natural place for us to continue growth, as we see at some point in the future another parking structure. We are on a very limited site, so I can't forecast exactly what it would be, but I can anticipate that we will probably see some further development in that area. And the process is, unfortunately, I didn't bring my, my calendar that had kind of the dates when we begin some of the, these things, when we actually get through the, all the appearances. It is, it is pretty arduous. We've found out that if we cannot predict a use, especially for this particular property, that we're better off in preparing for the future as opposed to waiting until something does come up, because the process is long and it's difficult to maintain the momentum through that. So I don't know if it answers you or not, but we don't have a specific, but we anticipate there will be growth in that area.
So the hospital has a long-range plan that is not specific to this particular site at this time? Would that be a fair...
On our long-range plan, this would show up as parking at this point in time.
Thank you.
I guess I was kind of thinking about it, except it's a difficult question to, to answer if you don't know whether or not you might ever build a structure there. I was wondering if parking might not become a problem through code or, or whatever if you did build a new building there. I guess it would depend upon the size and, and the layout and all kinds of things, so I'm asking you a question that you can't answer because you don't know what kind of a building would be put there. But that, that did concern me a little bit.
Well, my probably safest answer would, would be to do as you suggest and not answer, Mr. Heath, but I, I guess what I would say is we, we work pretty closely with the city as we develop, and that's one of the things that they don't miss, is what are you going to do for parking as this development takes place? So should we develop something there? That would be part of the answer we would have to come up with, is how will you address the parking needs of any facility development? And you're right, I, I think the city has ordinances addressed many of the parking issues, but it does depend on what is the function, the type, the activity for the particular type of development, so...
And so you own the property because of the eventuality of who knows what might happen, but you have no use for it?
We have a use for parking for it right now.
Stand, I mean, the building itself. You have no use for the building itself right now, nor would you plan any uses for it?
We've talked about it quite a little bit through administrative and, and board discussions, and we do not forecast a use for the, for the facility. It's, it is small. It's been identified by the owner or the prior owner or, or a user, as well as others, as to be a difficult space, a, a challenge to use, and not very energy efficient. And our best use for that spot is, is development into additional ground-based parking for our customers and for, in preparation for future development.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Henningcamp. This time, I'd like to invite any other members of the public who'd like to comment on the application. If you can give us your name and address.
My name's Al Mattson. I'm with the 444 Baker. I'm your vice chairman of the Design Review Board, and I appreciate your courtesy to hear out why we turned down the application. On your page four of your agenda here, it says about the middle of the page, that the staff perspective, talking about the planning staff, appears to present, that the building in question, the hospice building, possesses, does not appear to possess distinctive architectural characteristics or represent a historically important... or represent a historically important contact setting." I've worked a lot with the city planning department and they all find they're very fine people. I've learned a great deal from them in my work with the Designer Review Board and with the Fox. But I must take exception to them at this point for several reasons. First of all, the unique design of the building. This type of architecture has been ignored in the past. It's just been put off as not being particularly important, but has recently caught the attention of the National Trust, who refers to this 1950 sty-, 1950 style of architecture as "Duop." And it's been featured in many of its, in several issues of its magazine preservation. It's a unique style. It was a rage of the day and is one of the most unique buildings in Salina. It speaks to a time, a place in history, and in its setting. It's architecturally significant and is part of our history. The building is not 50 years old. It's only 45 years old. But as Mary Douglas, the Chairman of the Heritage Commission, said, and this is from the meeting minutes of the last meeting, "If the building were five years older, we would give it a historical designation because it's rather unique and modern architecture." Well, there's no worse use you can make of a building than just to tear it down, pave it over, and make a parking lot. The city planning department says it has no distinctive architectural value. We'll need it as a parking lot. I don't know of any parking lot in the world that has anything resembling a distinctive architectural value. The building still has a useful length and can be modified, extended, rebuilt, and enlarged to be used for just about anything you want to. It doesn't have to sit just like it does now. It's not a historical building that can be not modified. It's one that can be. Walls can be moved out, it can be added to the top, as long as we save the unique facade at the front of the building. The mark of a great city is not what it tears down, but what it chooses to preserve. In the past, I've referred to this building as a little ugly duckling. Well, this will continue further with the little story of the little ugly duckling. Turns out to be a rather beautiful swan. Reason number two that we did not approve this is because we don't know what's going to happen next. And I think that has been pretty well established here with the conversation with Jeff. The logical expansion of the hospital is into the 300 block of South Santa Fe. And I was surely hope, as being a downtown merchant, that's the direction it would take. According to this study by, which we refer to as the Puma Report, on page nine of part three, it says, "A notion of the expanding of the hospital into the 300 block is most preferable and that the Masonic temple should be protected if it's included in this planning area." It also goes along the state on the next page. "We recommend that the city consider expanding streetscape and landscaping along South and Mulberry Street to provide a corridor from there to the park." Let me take, let me take you and show you a picture of what this park looks like right now. I got this little map here. I'm sorry it's little, but I'm not very good at this sort of thing. And if you notice, it's a very colorful, colorful-looking map. First of all, this is really two city blocks, not one block. When we talk about the 300 block, it's bordered on one side by Santa Fe and another by Fifth, one side by Santa Fe and another by Seventh, with Mulberry and South Street. Put these two blocks together and you have about 200, 2,500 feet, give or take a foot here or there. If you can't visualize what that looks like, take, take and put in your mind two Walmart supercenters, put them across the street from each other and they'll fill up those lots right there. That's the size we're talking about. You notice the colors on the map are not because I'm not color-coordinated, because they show different things. Green is for houses. Pink is for businesses that exist in there right now. Black is for parking lots. And the red is the building in question. The yellow over here is the Masonic Temple, a national registered landmark. As you can see from this, it's quite higgly-piggly. It's a little mix of this, a little mix of that. As Mr. Andrews has said, the block is something in distress or compromised, is his exact words. You also notice it's the northeast corner of the parking lot of, of right here is the entrance to, leading off into the park area. Another part that the, the Puma report regards as a gateway from the park to the hospital, from the hospital straight into downtown. We've talked something about the corridor as that by developing this 300 block, we would develop a corridor that links to downtown with the hospital. This is a key intersection. And right now, as the plan stands and for the foreseeable future, it would be used as simply a parking lot. And what happens if we have construction in the future on this particular lot? Well, as we can see right here, it's not particularly big. Where's the parking going to come from, from any lot? Any building is put on that lot. We don't know. Clearly, is, the parking is not feasible right now for anything. So what are we going to tear down next? There's not a whole lot of options here. We don't seem to have a plan. Mr. Andrews, he said in his notes in the Heritage Commission minutes of page seven and eight, "We need to have a plan for an orderly expansion. We're looking to get that from the hospital. It has a master plan for growth, an agreement ahead of time as a preferred option." What we are saying here is before we tear down any more buildings, create any more parking lots, we must have some idea of where we're going, how we're going to get there, and how we're going to do that. The one possible avenue of that is the hospital district, which is also discussed in the Puma Report. It's my understanding that tomorrow, a discussion of that, just very well going on probably in this room right now, as to where and how this area is to be developed and what the hospital zone will end up being. What we need to do is have some sort of feasible plan here before we start tearing things down and moving away from where we are right now. This already block is compromised. As you can see from the various colors, it's a higgly-piggly. It's just that and the other. There's no inherent plan to this block at all. And yet it is a very key block because it connects the hospital and downtown and from the hospital over to the park. Both areas discussed in the Puma Report. We can't, we can't narrow our visions as just talking about one building and one parking lot without really compromising or looking at what the whole total picture will be. Because if we don't do that, we'll end up doing the same thing we've got right here, a higgly-piggly mess of a bunch of colors five years from now and will look a whole lot different than it is right now as we have, can develop some kind of comprehensive plan or an idea of where we're going. To merely suggest that we have been a good steward, that we've done well so far is very enough, but we still need a plan, as Mr. Andrews has pointed out. What we need to do right now is stop, think this thing through before we go any further. Starting tomorrow, we're going to have hearings, as I understand it, on the hospital zone. I believe we should just stop right now and let the hearings go forth and see what kind of plan that we can develop that Mr. Andrews is talking about. The hospital expansion, which is very critical to this town, very critical to downtown Salina, is important enough that we need to think about it before we do it. We don't need to jump in a piecemeal way. It lies at the very center and the very core of downtown. It's not out south where we just pave over some farmer's land, throw up a cement block building, and say, "We've expanded." This is important. It's in the middle. It's the heart and beat of the city. We simply cannot approach this in a pragmatic or a higgly-piggly or a compromising way. It has to be thought through before we tear down anything more, before we make another move, before we put down another dang parking lot. We do not need that. What we need to do is think it through. Now, the hospital has talked about its need for parking. I've been on this, on the Designer Review Board for approximately two years now. We've approved almost a thousand slots of parking, of off lots, lots in front of the medical towers. We've approved the parking garage. All of these parking was approved by the Designer Review Board unanimously every time, except this time. There is only 22 parking places at stake here. And at the same meeting that we turned down this request, we approved the destruction of the King Muygleson subdivision right in the middle of the hospital, which will provide something like 110 more parking lots. There is not really a critical need for 22 more parking places. If you take a look at this map and you actually visit the area, you notice the area right behind the hospice center is also a parking lot, which right now is unusable because the hospital is usually, or must move around. It's using it as a park construction equipment. Move that equipment off and you have your 22 parking places. What we need to do before we make any more steps, before we go any further, is we need to think this thing through, plan it out, is what we're going to do. There are a number of questions, I think, that are very important that we ask about this future development. For example, we need to know how the, any buildings we've been in here will fit around the temple. The temple is a national historical landmark. We need to know what size a building, what the architectural style of the building would be, so we're not interfere with its designation. How much property does the, the hospital actually own or control in this block? We don't know that either. What kind of plan or pattern of development will we have? What kind of parking lots are we going to have? Is it going to be all surface parking lots? Is it going to be above ground, below ground, or a combination of all three? Mr. Andrews talks, as, as mentioned before, the necessary to cut down curb cuts, curb cuts, driveways, as I understand them. And yet we're going to have parking lots. We have to have parking lots on this for any type of hospital expansion. Where are these parking lots going to come from? Will the entrance be from Fifth Street to Seventh Street? We don't know this. We had to have some kind of idea of how much parking we're going to allow for this, how much development we're going to have, what kind of parking spots it will be. Right now, there are 13,590 cars pass through the site every day, according to the Puma Report. There's no reason to believe that will go down after the expansion of this area. It will be even more congested than it is before. We already have left turn rains, lane into the dang parking lot. How will that interfere with any other turn lanes into any other parking lots that the hospital may plan? How will this development affect Fifth, people who live on Fifth Street, Seventh Street, who front right onto this property? We don't know that. There are four businesses that operate in this block. Three of them are franchises who have agreements and have invested thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars in their livelihood. What is their role in, in play in this development? Will the downtown be able to expand into this area too? Will it be able to work and cooperate with the, with the hospital? Will the retail spaces made available? If you've noticed the last newsletter, which was put out by the Downtown Salina, we already are starting to expand again the retail section along Iron Street, an area which is historically, as long as I can remember, which goes back into the 40s, has always been office. Now, all of a sudden, it's retail. If you've read the Puma Report, you'll know that downtown Salina needs more retail. People want more retail. They like downtown. Can we expand there and coexist with the hospital? These are things we need to know. How will any of this affect, affect the temple, which is a national historical landmark? Anything that is developed on this slot will affect the temple because everything within 500 feet of the temple has to be reviewed by the Heritage Commission and this block, everything in this block is within 500 feet. I think before we go any further, we need to, to develop some sort of comprehensive plan, which should be starting tomorrow before we start tearing down anything, before we put up any more blocks. There is no particular rush here. We're talking about 22 parking places. These are the reasons why the Designer Review Board turned down the application for the, for the destruction of this building. We believe we're right on the facts. We believe we're right on the concept. And as Mr. Andrews has reported in his report, we believe we're right in the principle. It's been an honor and it's been a privilege to speak for you today. And we urge you to uphold the Designer Review Board and vote for option number two. If you have any questions, I'll be more happy to deal with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional, additional public comment? If you can give us your name and address.
My name is Shawna Marasko and I live at 2288 Rope Street. And I'm actually an employee of the hospital and actually just came here for a school project today, but I kind of got interested in this. I have a couple of, I guess, just points to make. I'm not sure that, you know, Mr. Mattson spoke of the 50's style of that building. And I park in that parking lot next to that building every day. And I'm not sure if the beautiful guard rail that surrounds that building is what makes it so historically beautiful, or if it's the decaying asphalt in the driveway, or the trees or shrubs that aren't kept up. I'm not really sure what actually makes it beautiful to the downtown. I understand that there's supposed to be some historical value, 50's style, retro-style building. But, you know, he also talked as to how it fits in with the Masonic temple. I guess the Sonic building is probably 50's style too in its retro way or the Taco John's. You know, none of those actually really fit into the historical value of the Masonic temple, but yet both those buildings are on the same blocks that you're referring to. I guess I just, I'm curious. I know that 22 parking slots aren't very much, but I work in that end of the hospital. I'm a birth center employee. And on a daily basis, we have customers in our unit that comment that they had to park clear at the south end of the hospital and bring their family through the hospital to come to our end of the unit. We have nurses who have to park, you know, two blocks away because there is no parking for them. And I know that 22 slots are not a lot. But that's 22 places. It's 22 families that didn't have to walk from the south end of the hospital to come with their family member who's on our end of the hospital. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of disturbed by the idea that that building is beautifying the area when, just from a public view, I mean, I, I didn't grow up in this town. I, I don't live here. I, I do live here, I'm sorry, but I didn't grow up here. I've lived here for seven years and I've never seen any way that that building beautifies the, the area that's right there. I mean, and as far as fitting in historically with the Masonic temple, there are multiple buildings on those blocks that don't, haven't really, they haven't been there a long time. They aren't, they aren't, weren't built in 1945, but yet they were allowed to be built on those areas. And I think the hospital's done a wonderful job in making sure that anything that they build has trees, shrubs, and, and they go out of their way to make sure that those areas look nice for the public. And that's all.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Vice Mayor Jokka, I have one more question to ask of staff. What is the timetable for the hospital planning process that Mr. Mattson referred to?
Well, some of that is going to be up to the, the health center and their representatives. The, the plan is to present them as much information as we can from the city staff's side. And then they're going to have to have their own internal reviews with, within the regional health center to, to kind of give us response and, and feedback to that. The process is to begin tomorrow with the Planning Commission to discuss, should there be a hospital medical district and what the content of that should be. And then to, we have identified six possible growth or expansion areas for the Santa Fe campus. And we want to provide that information to the regional health center, see if there are other locations that they see as viable for expansion and, and let them have their internal reviews and then provide feedback to the Planning Commission and ultimately the City Commission as their preferred growth direction or growth options. I could see that extending into July at a minimum.
Is Mr. Henningcamp still here?
Yes.
Mr. Henningcamp, I have one other question for you. I'm sorry.
I'm glad to respond.
Is there an immediacy in your need for parking? Would it be possible that we table this action until such time as all of the planning process is completed and we get a further clarification from Mrs. Douglas about the Har- the Duop, I believe it is, architectural style?
I believe there is an immediacy of need for that. If there wasn't, we wouldn't have, have come forward. Another thing related to that is any development that we would do there, this is back to Mr. Heath's question, probably requires parking. While we did not develop, or at least at this point, we're not developing the cancer center, which we feel will be very beneficial to Salina at that location. We did look at that and sized the building for there. The, this, this particular building would have to have come down to do that. And any future thing that we might see, even though we don't have a specific, with the thought being that it sets back to the east half of that lot with the west half meeting the parking and landscaping needs. So one of the other things is we've talked a lot about parking, but in Salina, Kansas, proximity is a key element of parking. The fact that there is a parking potential development at K&amp;M does not satisfy the parking. Salina Regional Health Center is a very large place. So proximity parking is very key and this is a proximity parking issue for us. I, I think Salina Regional Health Center, I mean, we have, we have 1,500 employees. We have an annual payroll of $50 million. We have a tremendous amount of community investment we do. I mean, it's a very large organization that, that it takes some time for us to, to work to make things happen. And so we're in the process of preparation frequently. And that's what this is about here today, is preparing us for the things that we can foresee. What we can foresee is not reuse of the former hospice facility at 333 South Santa Fe. In any scenario we've looked at, we do not see reuse of that facility. I think it's, it's important for us to, to consider that because a building is, is older does not mean it is historic in nature. a building is older, does not mean it is historic in nature. That's kind of a long answer to your short question. I apologize, but it is a proximity issue, and it is an issue which we feel we need to proceed with, with some immediacy.
Thank you.
I'll respond. Any other questions?
Question, Mr. Andrew. Oh, please.
I'd like to respond to the question also, as far as immediacy. This is a very difficult building to tear down. It has two vaults, one upstairs, one downstairs. Both of them have to be destroyed in order for the building to completely come down, and the landfill to be done. So, an immediacy here, we're talking about several months and tying up another parking lot adjacent to it for the construction equipment. So, there isn't really any immediacy here. It means we're not going to have a parking lot in that spot for quite some time in the future. I can't tell you how long it will be, but it will be some time, and we will actually lose parking lots for the hospital because the lot next door will be used for construction. As far as close-in parking, I pointed out on my little map there that there is a lot directly behind the hospice center that right now is, could be made available if they'd move the construction equipment off of it. And there's every bit of twenty-two slots in that lot, right there. And I think before we, again, I want to come back to the same issue. We need a proper preparation before we go to tearing down anything, moving into that block. We need to have some sort of plan, and that plan will start being working on tomorrow. And take it into July, we're not going to have a parking lot on that lot in July, probably August, probably even September because of the construction problems and destruction problems we have there. So, there is not that immediacy. There may be an immediate need for the parking lot, but it's not going to get there very fast because of the destruction of the building, and because part of the lot is going to have to be taken up with more construction equipment, so there is going to be a net loss of parking. Okay?
Mr. Andrew, question. He brought up a point about all the curb cuts on that lot, and he is right that turning this into a parking lot wouldn't really cut down on any of those.
Well, actually, their plan, if you look at the plan in your packet, their plan is to eliminate the two curb cuts that are there today and replace that with landscaping. So, you, right now, there's basically a U-shaped drive around that building with two curb cuts on Santa Fe. Both of those would come out and be replaced by the sidewalk and landscaping. The access would be from that entrance on South Street. So, the plan submitted by the Regional Health Center would eliminate those two curb cuts that are there today.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions?
Vice Mayor Jelka, I would like to move that we table discussion of this action until we have a clearer picture of the hospital medical plan, concept that's to come before us, as well as to get a clarification on the historic nature of the building. I very much appreciate the hospital's need for additional space, but I also feel that it's important that we be sure that our historic heritage isn't completely considered as we go about the planning of our downtown.
Do I hear a second for that?
Just a comment first. Commissioner, I think, first of all, I originally came into this thinking kind of the same way you did, and I don't necessarily see the hurry, but at the same time, I don't ever see a scenario where this building is going to go into their plans. I mean, I think that that's what Salina Regional has done over the last couple of years, is they've started to think about things, and I think that they did take a good look at this building. I just, you know, they're the owners of the property, and although I do appreciate the historical aspect and how we have to look at those things downtown, because I have been on the Design Review Board before, I just don't ever see a scenario where this could be part of their plan, and, you know, I just think maybe we'd be dragging something out there.
I think I have a tendency to agree with Monty. When I talked, asked Mr. Henning Camp about other usages, he says you have no other usages planned for that building and are not likely to do that. I think there's a certain amount of inevitability here that no matter what you do with that, that building's going to come down. And I think I kind of have a tendency to agree with you, Monty, that we'll be extending something that, or delaying something that at some point is going to happen anyway.
I don't buy the argument that this, there's a pressing need for this lot, for twenty-two parking spaces. However, despite that, I do tend to feel like my two colleagues on the left, that there probably isn't a good reuse for this building. That motion dies for lack of a second.
Vice Mayor Jelka, I move that we overrule the Design Review Board and grant certificate for demolition for Salina Regional, citing mainly the positive economic impact Salina Regional Health Center has on downtown and the Salina as a whole, and although admitting that the building does have architecturally unique features, I do not think that they are historically significant.
Saying I couldn't have said that better myself, I'll second the motion, also with the aside that maybe by taking this action, we'll be able to start the Puma report to give it a little boost and get it started.
So, the motion is to overturn the Design Review Board decision and allow the certificate of demolition for the property in question. Any additional comments?
Just one. I think in the deliberations for the hospital medical plan, that if a multi-story parking garage is the ultimate use of that parcel of property, I don't think that we are going to be serving either the recommendations of our consultants or the good of our community in doing so. So, I'd like that to be fully considered before we take any action that results in that.
Yeah, and I agree. I think that it's important that this is only the step that we've taken to do this.
Right.
I mean, they've got to come to Mr. Andrews and everybody for any further building plans that eventually have to be okay by us. So, I'm comfortable with your comments there. That's true.
I had a couple of other comments. I certainly respect the unquestioned credentials of Mr. Mattson when it comes to historical preservation downtown. We do have an odd situation here where the hospital and the Heritage Commissioner are on the same side of an issue, which hadn't happened a whole lot recently. Ultimately, though, I found myself unable to feel a great amount of nostalgia for this building, and I didn't see it as a Fox Theatre type building that we had a mothball while we tried to decide what to do with it. So, I'm going to support the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
That passes three to one with Devine dissenting.
We will now move to administrative items. Item eight point one.
Second reading ordinance number zero-two dash one hundred eighty-four authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds series two thousand and two. Ordinance was first passed on June tenth, and we have received no comments since then. For the comments at this time, public comment. Motion, please.
Mayor Seaton, I move that we adopt on second reading ordinance number zero-two one zero zero eight four authorizing the issuance of IRB bonds series two thousand and two.
Second. Moved and seconded that we pass this reading on second ordinance, this ordinance on second reading. Try that. Zero-two ten thousand eighty-four. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Devine?
Aye.
Commissioner Heath?
Aye.
Commissioner Jelka?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Mayor Seaton?
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Continuing with administration, item eight point two.
Second reading ordinance number zero-two dash one hundred eighty-five amending ordinance number zero-two dash one hundred seventy-seven, section three, effective date pertaining to smoking in restaurants.
This ordinance was passed on first reading June tenth and provided different scenarios should the repeal petition be successful on when we would implement the smoking ordinance. No comments have been received since then. Is there further comment at this time? Motion, please.
Mayor Seaton, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance zero-two dash ten oh eight five, amending the ordinance zero-two dash ten oh seven seven, section three pertaining to the effective date of the smoking in restaurants ordinance.
Second. Moved and seconded that we approve this ordinance zero-two ten thousand eighty-five on second reading. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Devine?
Aye.
Commissioner Heath?
Aye.
Commissioner Jelka?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Mayor Seaton?
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Administration, item eight point three.
First reading ordinance number zero-two dash one hundred eighty-six repealing sections eight dash fifty-seven, eight dash three sixty-four, and eight dash five sixteen of chapter eight and section twenty-two dash sixty-one of chapter twenty-two of the Salina Code pertaining to surety bonds requirements.
Mr. Morgan?
Thank you. Staff has been evaluating the possibility of eliminating surety bond requirements for the past several months, as we've taken a very aggressive look at chapter eight, which includes a lot of the items that we brought before you the past year and a half. I provided background information for you regarding surety bonds and the use today. That currently contractors both registered and licensed must provide a surety bond in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Certain types of contractors are exempted from this requirement. Annual cost is between a hundred and fifty dollars and two hundred and fifty for three years to the contractors. City Clerk's Office spends a great deal of time processing bonds, making sure they're up to date, making sure they're done on the standard surety bond form the city has prescribed. Also, over the past several years, very few instances have been made to recover the bond proceeds. The bond that we use is a code compliance bond, which is not to be confused with a performance bond. It's just ensure work is done in accordance with the code. And also, in our research, many cities are no longer requiring surety bonds. Staff's recommending today that this requirement be eliminated for a couple reasons, or a few reasons specifically. The protection afforded to the consumer is very minimal. Contractor costs must be passed on and ultimately are paid by consumers, who are ended up paying for minimal protection. There also exists, we believe, more effective methods to ensure contractors perform in accordance with the codes by including prosecution municipal court and possible revocation of a contractor's license or registration. We believe it's important that government review its requirements on a routine basis, which we have been doing, to determine if the intended goal is being met, and there's a purpose for the requirement, and that the methods used are cost-effective. We believe this elimination of the surety bond requirement is an excellent opportunity to eliminate some bureaucracy without negatively impacting our citizens and reducing the cost ultimately to them, and we believe that we are ready for the challenge to effectively deal with those contractors, that very, very small percentage of in Salina that don't do work in conformance with the adopted codes by eliminating their ability to work and/or prosecute in municipal court. This proposed recommendation was reviewed by the Building Code Advisory Board at its recent meeting, and we also recommend that if you choose to approve this today, you do it on first and second reading, as it gets very confusing as folks are coming into, every day, getting their license and their contractor, and we're not quite sure what to tell them right now. So, and if you did that, it would go into effect by the end of the week or four to five days. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Morgan?
Would you please repeat what the tools that you will use to enforce compliance with code if we eliminate this again?
By adopting a contractor registration requirement a few years ago, it required many of the tradesmen in Salina that have been working to now have to be registered in order to perform their trade. By having that registration requirement and then having the ability for city staff to recommend, go through a hearing, of course, and revoke that ability to work in their trade is a very strong tool that we didn't used to have. So, that is one tool that we have, and that's an appeal and a hearing process before the city manager, and ultimately, potentially appeal to you. The other tool is municipal court. When someone doesn't perform in accordance with the code, that is a misdemeanor. It's a potential criminal offense under the code, and we have the ability to take that item and prosecute them in municipal court. We recently have met with the prosecutor and the municipal judge to ensure that what we're doing is effective and that our language is written where we could be effective in administering it and ensuring that that was a tool, and we are convinced that it can be used, and we have started to use it in similar situations very effectively also already today. So, those, both of those item, one of which is new, and the second, one that we have taken a new stance and have a lot more documentation today. We have the ability to tell you who gets permits, who doesn't get permit, gets permits, and by that, I think we can do a much better job with our reporting and do that. It's been very confusing over the years because citizens will call and say contractor A did this work. It's not good. It's not this. It's not that. And we tell them, we can't help you. Oh, I thought they were bonded. Well, they're bonded, but they're only bonded to ensure compliance with the code, because in code means specifically meeting the Uniform Building Code, Plumbing Mechanical Code, so forth, Electrical. You can only imagine how difficult it would be for city staff to draw up any guidelines as to meet a workmanship quality performance and for staff to go out and interpret that. That would be pretty difficult. So, it's never been intended to do that, but it's sent a very, it's sent a mixed message to our citizens. So, we think this will take care of that. I spent time also with the Contractors Association, home builders. We've talked about this over the past year and have come to the conclusion that the negative side is, yes, indeed, there might be someone that would be more negatively impacted in the trade business, but the majority would not be. They'd be more positively impacted by eliminating this requirement. So, we're comfortable with recommending it today.
Thank you.
Further questions or public comment? Motion, please.
Mayor Seaton, I move we adopt on first reading ordinance number zero-two ten thousand eighty-six repealing sections eight dash fifty-seven, eight dash three sixty-four, and eight dash five sixteen of chapter eight and section twenty-two sixty-one of chapter twenty-two of the Salina Code pertaining to surety bond requirements.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adopt on first reading ordinance zero-two ten thousand eighty-six. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Mayor Seaton, I move that we declare an emergency exist for second reading on the same day.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Seaton, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number zero-two one zero zero eight six.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Devine?
Aye.
Commissioner Heath?
Aye.
Commissioner Jelka?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Mayor Seaton?
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Administration, item eight point four.
Resolution number zero-two dash fifty-eight forty-six authorizing an agreement for donation of right-of-way with Rhymold Properties for the extension of Moundview Avenue from Faith Drive to Crawford Street.
Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Mayor Seaton and Commissioners. The two thousand and two capital improvement program includes a street and traffic safety project at the southeast quadrant of Ohio and Crawford intersection. Project involves, as you know, the construction of a new street, Moundview Avenue, to connect Faith Avenue to Crawford Street east of Ohio. We've attached an aerial photograph of that location, a vicinity map, and then the copy of the actual agreement for donation of right-of-way prepared by the city attorney and already signed by the property owner. This project, the extension of Moundview Avenue, is in response to traffic safety and circulation issues that exist at the Ohio Street and Crawford intersection, including the adjacent intersections of Ohio with Faith and Prescott, Faith to the south, Prescott to the north. Ohio and Crawford intersection continues to be a problematic intersection that has worsened with the opening of the new McDonald's restaurant. During the planning process for that restaurant project, traffic studies were completed, and it was determined that an alternate access point to either Crawford or Ohio needed to be developed. City staff got to work on that, researching alternative options. The alternate access would ultimately allow the median on Ohio Street to be extended south through the Faith Drive intersection, disallowing the southbound left-turn movement there from Ohio onto Faith, which is a major source of our accidents in this location. The most logical option was the extension of Moundview then from Faith to Crawford Street. Upon review of that option, city staff began preparing design options and cost estimates to determine the feasibility of the project. The estimated cost of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was deemed to be reasonable, and city staff began negotiating with the landowner to review the concept. Landowner is very
Landowner was very receptive to the project and agreed to donate the right-of-way for the roadway extension project. The owner here, Rymold Properties, Inc. of Salina, really should be commended for their cooperation in this matter and their foresight in the proper development of this area. We don't often have donations of right-of-ways, you know. Typically, we pay fairly dearly, especially in properties like this one that are prime commercial tracts of land. Staff has completed the construction documents for the project, and we're now ready to go to a bid letting. It's our anticipation that the project will be completed, constructed by November of this year. Our recommendation for you today is simply to accept the dedication of right-of-way for the purpose of constructing Moundview Avenue extension from Faith Drive to Crawford Street. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions regarding this request? Or comment?
Just thanks to Rymold Properties.
Look forward to completion of that. All right, motion, please.
Mayor Seaton, I move we adopt resolution number 02-5846 authorizing an agreement for donation of right-of-way with Rymold Properties for the extension of Moundview Avenue from Faith Drive to Crawford Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve resolution 02-5846. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. We will next meet on Monday, June 24th. Is there other business to come before us? Hearing none, motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Moved and seconded that we adjourn. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.